Okay, let's call the meeting of Bruce Sancho Board of Trustees meeting together for June 18th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM. We get a roll call, please.
Philbrook?
Here.
Craft?
Here.
DiGiorgio?
Here.
Sakowitz?
Here.
Vincent?
Here. Could you all please stand with pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Reese, how are you? Sorry about your father. Is the board had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda? Is there any additions or changes they have to make?
I had some questions with bills, and then we have a new agenda in front of us. The old agenda said we were going to move into closed session to discuss a legal award, and the new one says we're going in to discuss a collective bargaining agreement. So what is it that we're doing today?
That's one of the amendments we're gonna make.
Okay, so we, I mean, I'm prepared to discuss the legal award relative to the grievance.
Let me just explain what we're gonna do. We're going to H. So the one that says H is the accurate one, and there were like four different agendas this week.
I don't have an H.
I don't have H either.
Yeah, they don't.
It says right here. Oh, gosh, you do have a different one.
I don't have H either.
Okay, so it will read, it's changed several times when we talked to the attorney. So the motion will read to enter into closed session under MCL 15.2678H of the Open Meetings Act to review the written opinion of counsel. So not C where it's negotiation. The confusion was because we don't have a contract yet.
Okay, so, but we're, this is in reference to a grievance.
Yes.
So we have a, we have a whole grievance, award 23 page, or opinion 23 pages. We have a clarification. It doesn't look like we're planning to discuss that.
That's specifically what we're discussing.
Okay, but it says negotiations.
That's why I'm amending it. That is C. This is H, and it's to discuss the written opinion of counsel.
Susan, could you say it again? Could you read that?
Yes.
Motion again. Motion to enter closed session.
MCL 15.2678H.
Should say 8H.
H, okay.
Yes, not C of the Open Meetings Act to review written opinion of counsel.
Okay, so the written opinion from counsel is different than the arbitrator's opinion that he presented to the township. These are all public documents. These don't need to be discussed in a closed session.
According to the attorney, David, they do.
Not, not, well, last month, Bob Bullock's, all his, his whole arbitration was in the board packet.
Well, the attorney will be here soon if you'd like to question him. He's the one who directed us, both attorneys in fact, directed us this way. So they have been done wrong last, last month.
Well, these arbitration awards are FOIA documents, aren't they?
They're public documents.
They are public documents. So I guess I don't know why we would go into closed session.
Well, I, I, we, we both were in contact with the attorney to confirm.
Okay. All right. Well, I would, I guess I would like to just voice that if the attorneys agree that we can discuss the arbitration award, not the single letter that we got from the attorney. That was a one-page letter. I understand that to be information that is privileged information, but none of this other stuff is. So I think we should have the option of discussing that in open session.
Just last on the agenda, and he will be here. So.
Okay.
Ask him at the time.
So currently, we'll just, we'll make sure we switch it over to MCL 15.2678H. So that's correctness.
Okay. So I had a question I talked to Dorothy about before. Was there any overtime approved in any of the pays that we have before us?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Okay, so you didn't approve.
I did not see any overtime.
And is it, would it be possible to get a, just a statement when you approve overtime that it is included in the statement in this packet? So we kind of know where we're going.
I don't have a problem. And she's keeping track of everyone's overtime, not just.
Correct. No, no, I understand.
So when anybody receives overtime, have something presented to the board that would show.
Sure, just along with this.
Along with the bills.
Not everybody puts in for overtime, so.
Or comp time. You know, it's the same thing.
Okay. They'd have to present something to Donna, so I would get a copy of that.
Okay.
And that's what I would present, what was given to me from the accounting department.
And then the last thing I had was, under our budgets, under township board, we are still paying for cellphone service. I don't think Dorothy uses cellular service provided by the township. I don't. So I guess I'm curious as to why we're still paying this.
I think that's for the officials.
We have two.
This is township board.
Two tablets.
Well, we're under the township board.
Yeah.
That's falling under the township board is my understanding.
That would be this, this phone here, David.
Okay. No, that's fine. We had said early on when we were doing the budget that this was related to iPads that are no longer being used.
Oh, okay.
Are we paying cellular service on those still?
They never had cellular service, I don't think.
We may want to check.
I don't know. I guess we could check it.
I think there possibly was for, for, a cellular service was so they would have internet when they weren't in.
But the idea was just use them here. So I don't think we did have cellular service. Oh, I can check. I'll get you a break.
That's, that's what was explained when we were doing the budget. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't paying that any longer. I have nothing more.
I just want to clarify, and one thing you touched on, employee payroll schedule. You asked Dorothy if there's any overtime that's approved. I don't think Dorothy looks at the fire department's payroll.
No.
I'm sure there's some overtime.
I do get it, and I am looking it over to see if I see any kind of discrepancy. And I've asked some questions as far as how they get made, because they do have that scheduled overtime.
Yeah, right. So there is probably overtime on the fire department. Just wanted to let you know.
I wasn't referring to that at all.
No, I didn't think you were. Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is amended.
Support.
Court by DiGiorgio. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Craft?
Yes.
Sakowitz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. And move on to item four, which is comments from the floor. So at this time, anybody from the audience would care to come on up and comment, feel free to do so. Comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Derek Lees, 70900 Carnegie Lane. There looks like there's a road going in, an approximately 2,833 mile road. I don't know, I don't, I haven't been able to find any site plans or approvals for that development or whatever's going in there. There's a significant amount of construction going on. There was a, a lot of fill brought in to the wetlands that are, that are clearly in there. I haven't seen any permits or approvals. I'm concerned with how much development has happened without any of these things readily available to us. Hoping the board can inform the township residents what's going on.
I can do that. So there is a new subdivision. It is on part of Henry Ross's development that was sold off to a developer. Currently, there is actually no subdivision going in, but there is the access road. There was an easement that was dedicated for that subdivision. Possible future subdivision way back in the day. They have an, I don't remember if it's 100, I think it's 100-foot wide easement off a 33-mile road. Basically, what they did is there's no permitting through the township that is necessarily needed. It's gone back and forth with our attorney, with our engineer a few times. They've got all the soil erosion permits. They're putting in cross culvert. They've got all their permits for the cross culvert. The fill that was brought in was basically aggregate to backfill the cross culvert. I've got, I don't have it in front of me, but I can forward it to you. I do have the wording from the engineer on a determination, but nothing, township's really, no site plan on that development right now, nothing further going to be done. It was just access into that, that piece of land that the guy's got. So it's basically a drive into his property.
So all the trees have been accounted for, and are they being repaid?
Yes, absolutely. I know I've been in touch with the people in the next subdivision to the west. They were the ones that kind of were upset about the trees. I did Google Earth back in 2000. It was Clearwood subdivision. When Clearwood subdivision went in, there was a lot of trees in Clearwood subdivision. Then I Googled it again in 2024 after the subdivision went in, and they, basically they cleared every tree that was in there. They put the road in, and they, they put the road in, and they parceled off all the properties. All those trees were removed, the same. It's not what's being done on the, the new development, but it was done on Clearwood.
But Clearwood doesn't cross wetlands?
Right, but they did get permits. That crossing the permits is from Macomb County, and they did get their permits. And those permits were verified and checked, and they do have them on hand. So they do have those permits to go ahead and cross the wetlands. They're told what size box culvert needed to be put in. They complied, had it inspected. Everything's been done. Nothing the township can do on that. So. But like I said, I do have that wording from our engineer. Engineer's been out there a couple of times. We got, we had received another invoice regarding that from our engineer just recently. So. But I can bring you up to date. I don't have, I'm kind of blindsided by that. I can fill you in on all that.
Can I come and see you tomorrow?
What's that?
Can I come and see you tomorrow?
Absolutely, yeah. I've been out there a minute with the developer on that.
It'll be closed tomorrow.
Oh, that's right.
Friday.
Friday. How about Monday? I mean, I'm more happy to come see you. If you want me to come see you tomorrow, I'd be more than happy to meet with you. So. Okay. Anybody else like to comment? Reese, I'm sorry.
I do, but it's a comment about our library board trustee reappointment. Is it okay if I say something about it now, or do you want me to say something?
Go ahead.
It's, it's, okay. Just real quick. So I just want to say that I'm glad that Leanne is on the agenda to be reappointed to the library board. She's been doing an excellent job. I'm serving as president, but I'm done now. I stepped down and let someone else take a chance. But Leanne has done a fantastic job serving on the library board. You made a great selection. She's also served on the library expansion committee, done a great job there, too. So I'm glad to see that she's back on here for reappointment, and I'm sure that you will be voting for her to be reappointed. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it. Anybody else at all? No, we'll move on. Okay, move on to item five, which is our hearings and reviews. 5A, we've got 33, 33 M53 LLC IFT parcel number 14-01-36-205-009, which addresses 70528 Cordy Road. We do have Mr. Cordy here representing himself on the IFT. We can go ahead and go for board discussion on this before we do a public hearing or open up a public hearing.
Should we do a public hearing first?
Do a public hearing first.
No, we can discuss it.
So open up the public hearing for the 33-mile road LLC IFT at 6:12 PM. At this time, anybody would like to comment regarding item 5A on the agenda? No, we're gonna close public hearing. I don't think Brad speaks during regular, I think, if we have any question.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
I can speak as well.
Oh, are you here on behalf of Mr. Cordy?
Yes, with Macomb County.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, come on up. Thanks.
So my name's Emerson Kuleski, one of the economic developers with Macomb County. So what we're asking for today is just a designation of a speculative building. So this would further be more appealing to a tenant. So there's no tax decision coming your way today, but this would be for further use, more appealing to a tenant to fill that space. So just wanted to clarify before there's a decision being made.
What, what was that again?
Yep. So this is just for a speculative building. So we're just trying to designate it as so. So if a future tenant decides to come in and fill the space, they can furthermore go for an IFT. So getting 50% off, but that would be a further decision from you guys at another hearing. So not today. This is just that designation.
Right, but the IFT can be approved under speculative building.
Yep. So spec buildings, if a tenant decides to move in, then you guys would approve for 50% off up to a certain amount of years.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it gonna be for one business, or is it multiple businesses?
So I don't know if it's a multi-tenant facility.
I was kind of looking at it. It looked like it might be multiple businesses.
Yeah.
The, the way the building stands right now, it can be either a single use, or it can be two people in the same building. So it can be split in half depending on what the user is and what their needs are.
Okay. So you're asking for it for the whole building, possibly two?
Correct.
Each getting 12 years.
Correct. Well, that's gonna depend on the terms of the lease and everything else. Then it goes to you, and you have to approve it accordingly.
But that would be then, when the individual tenant comes in, we would have to approve their IFT for 12 years.
Correct. They would have to qualify for the IFT as according to the county's requirements, your requirements, et cetera. This is just designating the building as being available for an IFT if they qualify at that point, and you approve it at that point.
Which is good for hopefully.
Hopefully.
So we're not, we're not approving it tonight?
Alls you're doing is saying that this building is allowed to go for an IFT at a later date.
More desirable.
What's the, I was gonna say, what's the advantage of that?
More desirable.
I know it's in the district, right? So I guess that's what I was trying to understand. So it's in an area where we would allow IFTs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So there should be an IDD in place. So in order to qualify for an IFT, there would be an IDD around the parcel, which there already is an IDD. Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions for Macomb County or for Brad?
South off of 33-mile road between Coll and M53, Cordy Road.
Nothing else. And this closed public hearing is 6:15. All favor. All right.
All right.
Give me a second.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Craft. Got it. All favor. Did you have a motion appear?
I don't want to do a discussion or anything.
Does we have any other discussion?
I mean, have we ever done one before? We designated it prior to anything being approved in that space?
We did one just recently on SMT.
But that was different. That was not, that was for them.
Right. So speculative, I think the purpose of it is basically it gives the incentive to offer that we have that IFT offered so that he's got people looking at the building as part of it. Gives them the ability to maybe see that we're.
Can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
You had also done another one on, you did two that's on the same street across the street.
Yeah.
Roughly 37 miles purple building. It was approved, two and a half years ago. And you finally hopefully have somebody that's gonna come in here for an IFT on that.
Gotcha. Okay. That was my question. All right.
It is an incentive for the new tenants to come in. They're gonna save 50%.
If they get approved. Okay.
Any other discussion? Motion?
Motion, my resolution to approve the industrial facility exemption for 33 M53 LLC IFT. I'm objecting. LLC certificate application is presented.
12 years, 12 years renewable, right?
Yes. That's what the application is. Yeah.
Support by DiGiorgio. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Vincent?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Sakowitz?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thanks, Brad, for coming out. Appreciate it. Macomb County. Thank you, Brad. Get back before the weather gets bad. See you guys. Thanks. And there's no presentations, no unfinished business. We'll move on to item 8A, the First Amendment to the Conditional Rezoning Agreement for Bruce Orchards. David, you're familiar with that? We had.
I am.
Okay.
And we had Lombardo Builders out before the Planning Commission at our June meeting. We looked over the site plan review. It's for Bruce Orchards, and that is the development that will be at Van Dyke and Mellon Street. There was some discussion about the roadway there. In the original approval, it was for 30-foot road, right-of-way roadway, and that is, we're gonna, we have to stick with that. Macomb County is not authorizing any 60-foot road, so, and that is all in line with the township. We discussed trees on the property with regard to it. There is, because of the amount of trees that are gonna be taken out, there is a substantial amount of trees that need to go back, according to our ordinance. But our ordinance doesn't make any allowances for dead trees or trees that are considered undesirable, that we wouldn't let someone plant if they were to have that property.
Hold on, David. Think, so the Conditional Rezoning basically is what it was, is that the judgment that was entered by the Planning Commission was to have brick on four sides of the building wasn't included in the, in a rezoning contract. So it was caught after the fact that it was not part of, so all of this basically is just an amendment to add that, add that Conditional Rezoning Agreement for Bruce Orchard to add brick to four sides of the, you know, which was required originally. That was left out of the, of the agreement. So we're just amended to add this back into it.
Okay. I didn't understand that was.
So the whole part about the trees.
Save that.
That was what we were doing. Save that for another day, because that'll be coming soon enough, the rest of it.
Got it.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the Conditional Rezoning Amendment to, or First Amendment to the Conditional Rezoning for Bruce Orchards as presented by the attorney.
Second.
Court by Dorothy. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Sakowitz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Yeah, Dave, everybody, David, everybody thought that that was part, that was in there, and everybody overlooked it, but Henry voiced it, having to catch it.
Yeah, and it was, we did verbally talk about it at the Planning Commission and here, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. Move on to item 8B, which is our Sora Woods Fireworks Permit, which is pretty much housekeeping, because we do it every year. Chief, you wanna go ahead and give us your take on it?
They have our blessing.
No issues. Looks like the insurance is valid.
Any issues? So long as our insurance is up to date.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the Sora Woods Fireworks Permit. Date of display is gonna be July 26, 2025, as present, alternate dates, July 27, 2025, as presented.
Support.
Court by DiGiorgio. We have any other discussion? Roll call. Alexi?
Craft?
Yes.
Sakowitz?
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Let's move on to item 8C, which is our Fire Department, Macomb County Dispatch. Chief, you're on the hot sheet again.
So I'm probably, board packet, is Macomb County's proposal to do dispatch for the fire department. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at it. Romeo and Macomb County did offer dispatching back and forth. If you, I know the numbers, there's a lot of numbers in the, in the packet. If you break it down, let's just say apples to apples, Romeo's proposal was 50,000, and Macomb County's was 47,000. All the other added costs are for us to get integrated IT, you know, get our software up, geolocation, tracking, real-time data, pretty much live dispatching 24/7. I'm still going back and forth if you look at. So the first, this second page, where it breaks down the one-time cost, network, your IT support, Tyler Technologies, station alerting, technical services. So the first one is, would be IT. I'm currently talking to Macomb County on that to try to figure out why we would have to spend that expense. We currently have that network in place, which is something I've been working on for about a year now. We're trying to figure out if that is compatible, and we can, our IT can handle it versus their IT handling it on that expense. Your IT support services, that's just gonna be in there. Obviously, they're gonna, you know, that's just the minimal cost that they add in there. Your Tyler Technologies, which is the licensing of the software and making us all mobile, which means everybody that is on the department, if we choose to go, let's say, from 10 licenses to 34 licenses, right? So this quote is the highest quote that we're gonna get, right? From this point on, the quote diminishes, it gets lower. This was, I, I wanted to know what it would cost completely at the high point versus us coming in, and then, you know, we have these added costs. So the proposal that you're looking at are the highs. From this point, we're gonna whittle it down to figure out what we're gonna, what we're gonna do with this, with this proposal. We have an option on the, on the licenses. We have currently 10 iPads, which is all of the apparatus that we own. So we can buy licenses for all of the, all of the. So we can buy licenses for all of the, all of the, um, 10 apparatuses, which will give us fully integrated dispatch for, you know, all the time. One for myself, or we can purchase it for everybody on the department. So that's where the 34 came in and you see the cost is at $16,000. Each license is roughly $475. So right now, I had a long conversation with, uh, Macomb County this morning. We, it looks like we're probably going to be looking at 11 licenses. So you're gonna, you're gonna look at a reduction of that $16,000 by at least $10,000. So that's one reduction already, depending on what we decide, how we're gonna, how we're gonna implement this. One of the reasons we can cut back on licenses, we currently have three different softwares that run our dispatching or notification system as we currently run. They assured me that we can, we can continue to keep one of the, one of the three currently as we, as we run right now. So we can run the way we want to run right now and cut those licenses out. And then once we start getting fully integrated with, you know, the automation and everything else, 100% live, we won't need those licenses in, in the future either. So I, I've kind of made the decision based on talking to her this morning that we're probably only going to get 11 licenses. We're only going to need, need 11 licenses because if we keep the record, the one program that we already have, that is going to notify everybody at home. And that's really where the licenses get involved. We have to have a way to notify when people are home that there's a call happening for them to respond if we need them, right? So that's just one of the, one of the things. If we weren't a combination department, we would only get 11 licenses and we'd be done. We don't have, we wouldn't have a need for it. Because then, once this is fully implemented, all the stations are going to be fully automated. You know, it's going to come over the speakers, it's going to be on the iPads, everything's going to be real-time data when we fully implement this. So it's roughly about 25,000 per station to implement all the, the software, the lighting, the strobes, everything that we need to become fully integrated, right? So what'll happen is the, Macomb County comes over the air, let's say you're in the bathroom. We may end up putting a strobe in the bathroom or a light that flickers in there to notify you, let you know, hey, there's a call, right? Because there isn't going to be a speaker, there'll be speakers in the bay, there'll be speakers in the, in the quarters, there'll be speakers, speakers in the, you know.
Chief, move your microphone over.
The living quarters. So those are the things that we need to add. We currently do not have any speakers. So when we get toned out right now, it's either a pager, a radio that we carry on ourselves, or it's at a, a mobile unit, right? That's how we get alerted. So you could be out in the bay, you may not hear that alert, right? So in order for us to get integrated with that, that's the cost that they're telling us it's roughly going to cost. We're only going to do stations currently, we're only going to do Station 2 and Station 3. Station 1, we'll figure out what we're going to decide to do with Station 1 since typically I'm the only one that's there or the people that come in from home. And at that point, they're already going to be notified anyways. Once they jump in the apparatus or the vehicle, they're going to have all the information on the tablets. Technical services, there, there's a technical services fee. I believe that's on the, um, the tower issue or radio issues. That there, that's a fee that they're charging. So everything on this, on this page is a one-time cost. So you're looking at the 81,000, we're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 60,000, one-time cost. Now, we can eliminate those also and take baby steps and eliminate the $52,000 if we don't want to be fully implemented. If we just wanted to convert dispatch tomorrow, according to the county, we could seamlessly do that, pay the $47,000 for a dispatcher a year and they would just continue to, to do, we would just continue to operate the way we operate currently. The only difference would be is if the call went into Romeo, it automatically gets transferred to Macomb County. So we would only have one dispatcher, one dispatcher at that point.
On this little graph, it says total annual costs. I know you said one-time costs at the top. Is that just a typo?
It's a typo because if you look at the top, it says one-time cost.
Right. Okay.
So if you flip into the next page, those are your annual costs year over year for three years and they work also the union contract. So that's why the contract's only for three years if we decide to do it. Currently working on everything below dispatch service fees, right? Those, those numbers there are gonna, are gonna change, especially the, um, the Tyler Technologies is going to go down. That's a hundred dollar licensing fee for each, each person or each apparatus or each iPad that we use. So let's say we decide to only do 11, that 3,300 goes to 11,000, right? The network and IT, um, costs, I'm, I'm working with them right now to understand what's more feasible, our IT or their IT. So those, those charges will also diminish. Will be fully automated. They'll, we'll know where the rigs are, you know, we're going to obviously know the food, food to dispatch. So hopefully I'll cut down on apparatus use on scene. We're going to be integrated with our auto aid partners, which is going to be a huge source there because if we go to, let's say, a fire to Washington or Armada, we're also going to be on the same system. It doesn't matter where, as long as the county's dispatching for the fire departments in the county, we're going to be fully integrated with any of those departments if we respond to their, to their location. Live, as if they were live data.
Chief, is there only, is there a reason why we only have, we're in 2025 right now, but a two, pretty much two-year contract? Is that what they go on, two or three-year contracts? Is there any way we can lock in a?
We, I, I asked that question and again, it goes to the union contract. So their, their union contract is expected to expire in 27, 2027. So the reason they can't go any further is because you can see there's increases of roughly 1, 1 and 1/2% or 2% year over year. And that's because that's what's in the union contract currently. So the only way that these, those prices up top, so let's say 2028, let's say they go and they get, you know, a blockbuster union contract and let's say it's a 10% increase in their, in their wages, obviously that, we're going to have to pay that cost, right? So there's no way that they can, they can fix that cost.
Increases we're seeing yearly right now, those could dramatically change possibly in the future. I mean, it could be 3%, 5%, 10% maybe increases, it depends on their contract.
Not in 25, 26 and 27.
Right.
It's no different. So let's say dispatchers go and get a union contract in 2028, it's a five-year contract. If they get a 3% increase across the board every year, year over year, we're going to see that 3% increase on our dispatching services. No different than if we were charging somebody else for our service, right? You'd have to recoup that money. So currently, the, the easy way to compare this is if we switched over and we stayed status quo the way we are, it's 47,000 at the county level and it was 50,000 at Romeo's level.
Are there other benefits to going with county as compared to staying with Romeo, using Romeo?
All the benefits that I mentioned, I mean, just being integrated with, with Armada and Washington and Ray, all our neighboring communities. You know, we're all on the same page, we're all getting the same data. You know, one thing it might even alleviate is the 32-mile corridor where we both get dispatched at this point, right? Because sometimes, typically Washington gets dispatched before we do because that call goes in the, into county. Where our call might go into Romeo and it doesn't go into county first, right? So we would respond there, depending on where the call is, if it's on the north side or the south side, we, we would take that call. But there was an instance, actually last week, it ended up being on the south side, but we both responded at the same time. We got there a little bit later, but because we did, we get dispatched afterwards.
So any 911 calls coming from the village would be dispatched by them or the county?
Any 911 calls coming into the village rate, if.
If you go with the county?
Once this was implemented, would be automatically shifted to county.
County.
Yeah. So there's no way.
So there would be a streamlined service?
There's a streamlined service. There possibly could be a slight delay because there's no way to, because they dispatch police, fire and EMS at Romeo. There's no way to decipher that 911 call when it's coming into the tower, right? So that call's coming in, depending on your location, let's say you're, obviously, let's just say you're in the village, right? That call's going to automatically go to the village. There's no way to decipher on the other end, if I'm calling for fire, if I'm calling for EMS or if I'm calling for, for PD. So that call will still be picked up by Romeo PD. Obviously, there's a, they'll ask a question or however we're going to implement that. And they're like, okay, it's fire EMS. They hit a button, it shipped it over to Macomb County immediately, dispatch the fire department.
Is that only cell phones? Landlines are port forwarded over to county, won't they be?
No, because your landline is still, depending on, again, once again, well, it also depends on where that landline's coming from, right?
Yeah, because if it's.
313, 48, whatever, whatever, you know, I don't, that's a good question, but I'm assuming landlines are still going to go to Romeo. In that boundary, there's no way for us to turn those towers or those antennas to say they're all going to county.
Yeah, so you're talking towers that would indicate cellular where, you know, my experience, landlines would all be ported over to the county.
They possibly could be, you know. So I will check into that.
Okay. Do your stations currently have radios in them, like base radios in the station?
That's all we have. We just have base units.
Okay.
So the, the audio comes over the base unit.
Okay.
So you either have the base unit, you have the pagers that we carry, which we will be eliminating the pagers. So most of those, and that's another thing, most of those are failing at this point. Maybe we're going to get another year or two out of them, maybe three, maybe five. They're, they're slowly falling apart. We're looking if we needed to buy another 24 pagers to re-implement what we currently have. We're probably looking in the neighborhood of somewhere between 30 and 45,000 dollars, plus the service fee that we already paid for those pagers. We do already pay a fee yearly to Macomb County, to radio repair, what's called radio repair, to service those currently. So that's another thing that we will be eliminating. That's another cost that we'll be eliminating that'll absorb some of this cost.
Didn't we just, didn't we just purchase some pagers not too long ago and?
We purchased some batteries.
Batteries.
I want to say our pagers right now are currently probably anywhere from eight to 10 years old, and I could be wrong on that. And I, I mean, I, currently, I don't even wear my pager, the clip broke, the button fell off. We're just not going to continue to replace these.
So your base radio is not connected to an intercom system at this time?
And that's why it's costing us this, this amount of money at each station is to upgrade everything. There's no wires ran, there's no intercom systems, there, there isn't anything. So we need to get somebody out to do all that and that's where the costs are coming in at.
And I guess my last question would be budget-wise, you have the 81. Can you find that?
The 81 is not going to be 81, it's going to be a little less, but yes, we will find it. If not, we can take it out of the general fund. I did allocate, don't quote me, somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 80 to 110,000 dollars to this project in the current budget in different budget line items. Whether that was computer, you know, under computers, or that was under networking, um, things like that. So the funds are there.
Good.
Do you want to explain? I mean, I was kind of with you. We first originally met with Megan regarding the contract and the dollar amount that they came up with. And then Chief Roy tried to do everything he can to try to make it work, obviously trying to work with our neighboring communities, the village Romeo. As far as the benefits, you know, or going with county or with Romeo. But obviously, we used to have a dispatcher here, which was Eileen when she retired.
47, right.
Yeah.
We had a secretary dispatcher who was here until 3:30 and then after that, our units responding from home would take over dispatch. So we, we would pay them to sit on the radio, which took up manpower too. That's, that's another huge.
Right.
Issue, right?
And then Romeo.
Manpower sitting on the dust when we need them out in the field.
And then Romeo kind of took over that responsibility.
Back in September, I asked, I talked to chief, we kind of came up with a, with an agreement, hey, can we try this out? See how it works, which they did. They helped us out and now we're, you know, here where we need to figure out, we need to fully integrate it. It's going to be a huge benefit to the fire department and, and approve this.
So chief, are we make, are we looking at, are you looking for a motion to go ahead and approve this? We don't have Romeo's, I mean, we never really received anything from Romeo as far as the contract at all.
We didn't. It was verbal and we saw verbal. But, I mean, they were in the neighborhood of $50,000. And again, if it, the 50,000 that Romeo's going to, you know, charge us currently, again, that's why I keep going back to the 48 and the 50. Let's say we did decide to go with Romeo, you know, all the calls go to Romeo, they dispatch us out, we, we just stay status quo the way we are currently right now, right? Goes to our phone, it doesn't, we don't get the data dumped into our, our programs, into the CAD systems, this, that and the other thing. Once we integrate, if we integrate to, to county, it's, it's.
It's a streamlined process.
It's a streamlined process and everything becomes, you know, live.
Efficient.
Efficient, right.
So it's your recommendation primarily to use, go with the Macomb County dispatch.
My recommendation would be that we go to Macomb County and move forward.
I know you put a lot of time into it. Appreciate the time that Chief Roy.
Continue to put time into this, right? Because I'm still, I, I'm not as convinced with the numbers, just like I'm sure you aren't, right? So I'm going to continue to work on that with Macomb County and get it straightened out. But for $48,000 for a dispatcher, I think is a, is a fair price for what we're going to get.
Okay. Anybody have a motion anywhere?
Make a motion that we accept the Macomb County Sheriff's Dispatch Service Proposal as presented.
Second.
Supported by David Vincent.
And these are, I forgot, this will be 12 payments and the initial cost, we can also do quarterly or make payments on it. We don't have to bite the bullet. So let's say it is 80,000, we don't have to just kind of check for 80,000. They're willing to say, okay, what do you want to do? Whatever we decide to do as a board or as a department, they're, they're flexible, but they're going to say, well, we're okay with that.
It looks like you're going to have to sign an intergovernmental agreement. So is that something that we will see before we?
I believe that goes to Mike. As long as, from what I'm told, talking to county, um, as long as the board approves it, the fire department approves it, we move forward. They drop an intergovernmental agreement. She's currently going to drop a new one because what we're going to do is to jump into this, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We're just going to keep the status quo. So what's going to happen is if we accept this.
They're going to prorate everything until.
Yeah.
They get the.
Alls, alls we're going to start being charged is the dispatch rate of $47,000 monthly until we figure out as a board, as a department, how we're going to fully integrate.
And that'll only be good for the three years.
Correct.
And then we would come back and.
They would come back and give us another proposal. I don't see, again, let's use 5%, right? Let's just say it's 5% year over year for five years, right? Let's just say they, they get a heck of a contract. You're looking at a $2,500 increase in 2028. Then you're looking at a, let's say a $3,500 increase in 2029. It's, it's not a, a, it's not a huge hardship to take that increase for the dispatchers, I guess is my point on that. We're not looking at huge chunks because they're just, I, I just don't see where, where the dispatchers are going to get, you know, a 10% increase in their contract, right? Of their current wage. It's just probably not going to happen. Five is probably luckily and three is probably more compatible.
Well, they don't.
After 27, you're looking at, well, even, Mike, even if you took, even if you took, like, let's say you just take that 8%, right?
No, I get it.
It's not across the board. It's 8%, 3%, 3%, you know, 2% or it's 5%, 1%, 1%, 1%, right? And those are the only increases that you're looking at.
I think it stands to reason as well, even if you had another choice, the costs are going to go up year over year.
Year over year.
You know, because there's going to be increases in wages or, you know.
I think we started off at a really reasonable rate where it's not going to be astronomical in the future.
There's been a discussion with that kind of black cloud has kind of hung over Oakland County where they quoted a price for a police service and over time, the price has gotten so escalated out of control that they have to put another millage together in order to try to pay for the police services. Obviously, we have a contract in place, hopefully they're going to honor the contract, but, and then hopefully when the contract's up for renewal, we're not going to hit with a big increase. then hopefully, when the contract's up for renewal, we're not gonna hit with a big increase after we approve this at kinda the ratio.
It's in the agreement that the only increase would be whatever the wage increase would be, right? So I feel pretty protected in that, in that respect. Again, I can't predict the future, but I don't see how dispatchers are gonna get more than eight percent, right, in the first year. And then after that, it's just gonna decline, right? Let's say it was even a ten percent increase for five years, every year was ten percent, we're still only looking at, you know, the first year twenty-five hundred, the, the second year thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred. We're growing, so we're, we can absorb that, you know. It's a nominal cost that the fire department can absorb, continue to have dispatching services. Because it is truly huge for us, and it's been a great help that Romeo, you know, helped us out through that period of time. No doubt about it. Because again, it alleviates manpower, we can get to the scene if we're shorthand, we, we're not sitting on the radio, you know, responding back and forth, we're taking, answering calls.
Right.
To answer your question, he and I sign it, and it has to go to the Macomb County Board of Commissioners for approval after that, so...
I still wanna say with what Dorothy's questioning, the fact, I think that the contract still needs to be reviewed by the attorney, and I think that the board...
It will be reviewed by the attorney, because that is an intergovernmental agreement, which I believe our attorney already is very familiar with. Ours will be a little bit revamped because of what I discussed with...
Because they already do this with Armada and Ray, it's the same thing.
Yeah, he already does it with Armada, he already does it with, does he, I believe he's also Washington's representative, so he's already looked at these contracts. Ours is gonna be, ours is gonna be a little different at first, because we just wanna get it off the ground and keep the status quo and just move forward from there. And then she did tell me that there will be another intergovernmental agreement once we fully integrate this, because it's probably gonna take us at least six months to fully implement and integrate this.
Do you wanna, do you want the contract to come back to the board? I mean, is, are you fine with Frank's motion?
I think that you and Susan are looking at it along with the attorney. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
It doesn't have to go back to the board.
So Frank's motion as presented, then it would be acceptable? All right. Therese, you got a question?
Yeah, I do, we got a question. I'm gonna direct it to you, Mike. It's basically for the chief, but I'll direct it to you. So what I'm hearing, as you guys are all talking, Romeo was doing a good job for us with dispatching. I'm not understanding, maybe you could maybe brief us on exactly why this was triggered, that we wanna go to the county versus staying with Romeo. I'm hearing we wanna integrate with the other communities, but what's the benefit to us doing that when all the dispatching, all the calls are gonna go to Romeo anyways, then they have to be forwarded on? How are we benefiting from that as a community? And why wouldn't we wanna keep Romeo, since they're right here getting the calls originally, sending out the dispatch, and just keeping it here? I'm not really following that. Do you maybe think you could put that in layman's terms?
They don't currently receive all our calls. We're currently dispatched by Macomb County and Romeo.
How is that determined?
By the cell towers. So if you're in Bruce Township, that call's going to Macomb County. If you're in Romeo, that call's going to Romeo. If you're on the border of thirty-two mile road, depending on where that tower pings, that call could go to Romeo, or that call could go to Macomb County. We had, we had a big issue, especially on Powell Road or the thirty-three mile corridor, where the industrial corridor, where the calls, we didn't know where the calls were going. And there was huge delays on, on how that call was being sent and sent to us. So let's say it was on the border, it ended up being, let's say, down Powell Road somewhere, for some reason, it pinged Macomb County. Macomb County would get that call. Macomb County was told to not take that call, and that call needed to be transferred over to Romeo, and then Romeo was to dispatch us. That was a huge problem about a year and a half ago. When I took over, I said, this is not gonna continue to happen. I don't care who gets this call, it needs to be dispatched out.
Okay, and Mike, may I ask him one more question?
Absolutely.
Okay, can, can you give me a briefing on, on the benefits, then, of our community when it's being dispatched? And I get that, that is so important. I've used the fire department at my house several times. What is the benefit of us being integrated with the other communities around us, which was one of the points that you made, but I didn't follow that?
So we have auto, auto aid agreements with Armada and Washington Township Fire. So let's say you call, and let's say that's the third call, right? We, let's say our other two ambulances are out at the hospital, we have no more manpower left. County automatically calls Armada or Washington, whoever's closer, and they respond to your house. So we do the same thing for them. Right now, sometimes, we have to call back Romeo and say, hey Romeo, call county, send Armada to come to your house.
So all of this now will be, Macomb County will now be getting, well, you said, no, they'll still go to Romeo, but they'll be dispatched over to the county?
Macomb County will be dispatching one hundred percent of the calls.
Okay.
The calls will still be going to Romeo and Macomb. If they end up going to Romeo, Romeo's gonna send them right over to Macomb County so we can get dispatched.
Okay, so you, you made that clear. So it's gonna be one hundred percent, county will dispatch.
Right.
So that if something, if we are all tied up here, they can send another community in, okay.
So if we're going also to another community, we're already having, we already have that information, we don't have to look it up now. They're gonna call there and say, hey Bruce, we need you in Washington at such and such address. That's already gonna be data dumped into our, our iPads or our tablets.
And we don't do that now?
We do not.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. I don't wanna take any more time, but thank you, that does clarify it for me, thank you.
All right, Chief. So we have motion, DeGiorgio, I think second by David Vincent. Do we have any other discussion? Anybody else? Roxy, can we get a roll call?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Sakowicz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Thanks, Chief. Motion carries. Keep us updated on that. No problems with the transition from Romeo, too?
We're gonna take major steps. I mean, there's always gonna be some hiccups with transition, but there's gonna probably have to be a meeting with them also.
Sure, okay. Let's move on, item eight D, the Michigan Township Association, do us, Susan?
These are the same, same package we usually get with Michigan Township Association. I, I didn't make this notation on here, but I believe that was the amount for twenty-twenty-three. It does go up every year. This year, it's seventy-five hundred, seven thousand five hundred thirty-eight. We don't usually do the legal defense fee, defense fee, so it would be, total would be seven hundred and, seven thousand twelve hundred, seven thousand two hundred and twelve dollars per year. And I, I don't know if you all use MTA, the last couple of weeks, I've used it maybe three or four times. I know that the new trustees had their training through them, so it's whether or not you think that's worth the seventy-two hundred dollars.
So, so isn't it seven thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars?
Minus this two hundred and twenty-six.
Well, no, that two twenty-six is added on, so if we took that, it would be seventy-seven.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, yeah. So it's seven thousand five hundred thirty-eight, right?
I think that the MTA is a great resource. I don't think we utilize it as much as we should, especially for training, I think a lot of training is available, not just in the planning zone, but other departments, two advisors, treasurers, clerk's office, if we could utilize that. It's a phone call away when we need information, which we've all reached out to them for information.
We utilize it quite a bit, it's a great resource.
Are you making a motion to go ahead and approve the seven thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars for annual dues?
Second?
I was asking if you were making a motion.
Oh, wow. So moved.
I'll make that, I'm motion to approve the MTA dues for seven, one at twenty-five to six-thirty at twenty-six for seven thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars. Support by Craft. We have no other discussion, can we get a roll?
Vincent?
Yes.
Sakowicz?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move on, item eighty, our planning commission reappointments. And we can, I think we can appoint them both at the same time, instead of doing them separate. Both Randy Cant and Jared Vincent, both planning commission members, both their terms expire on six-thirty at twenty-eight, they are three, or, I'm sorry, six-thirty at twenty-five. They are three-year terms. I make a motion to go ahead and approve, I spoke with both of them, they're both willing to stay on and look forward to another three years. I have no issues, and happy, glad that they're gonna accept another three years, thank them for their hard work, and I'm motion to go ahead and approve them for another three years, so six-thirty at twenty-eight, both Randy Cant and Jared Vincent.
Or?
Or by DeGiorgio. Can we get a roll call, please?
Vincent?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Sakowicz?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Motion carries, thanks Randy and Jared, appreciate it. Move on, item eight F. Funny, you got a letter from Leanne Miller, whose appointment is, term is ending on six-thirty... I got six-thirty at twenty-nine, is that a typo? I don't know, it's, it's her terms ending at six-thirty at twenty-five.
If she's appointed.
Her terms ending this, end of this month. We got a letter from Claire Meeker, the Director of the Library Board, which also basically states that she would like to see Leanne stay on. Leanne wrote a letter, we had Therese, Serbido Smith came up, and you're still the president, right, currently?
I'm, I'm done now. So starting in July, Leanne is actually, if she gets reappointed, will be our Vice President, and Joanne Moreno will be our President.
Okay, and you're recommending that she be reappointed, so...
She's doing a great job.
All the stars aligned, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Leanne Miller's term for...
So, I have a question in that.
Yeah.
Is it, does it, is it a four-year term that ends in twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Motion to approve reappointment to Leanne Miller, term ending on six-thirty at twenty-nine.
Support.
Support by Dorothy. If there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Vincent?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Sakowicz?
Motion carries. We have item eight G, but is there any, we're gonna go into closed session, so after close, when we go into closed session, we're gonna remove the video, we won't have any video. Can we do comments prior to closed session? So, any of the commissioners had anything that they wanted to say, we can...
Communicate.
Communicate, I'm at communications. So why don't we do communications first, is that all right with you guys?
It's all right with me.
Yeah? Dorothy, what do you got?
Nothing, nothing to say.
Frank?
Twenty-twenty-five summer tax bills will be mailed out probably in about a week or so, you should receive them on or about July first, and then it will become due September fifth, fourteenth without penalty. In there will be a couple inserts as well. One will be the Bruce Township planning is master plan survey.
Master plan survey.
Yep, as well as a card for theft, I believe it is, from the county clerk, Anthony Fellini. So you can keep an eye out for that.
Is that it, Frank?
That's it.
Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you.
Chief, what do you got?
I'm all set, thank you.
David?
I would just like to reiterate what Treasurer DeGiorgio said about the master plan survey. There will be a document, a separate document in there with a QR code that you can scan and, and go right to the website and take the survey. I encourage everyone to take that survey, so we have as much information as we can, as the planning commission looks at the master plan. If you're not inclined to use the QR code, there are supposed to be surveys available here at the township office, so please take advantage of that.
Thanks, David.
Our office will be closed tomorrow in honor of Juneteenth, will also be closed on July third. There's an August fifth election, it's only a bond proposal for about thirty residents for Armada Schools, be precinct four. Recycling, a reminder, is only going to be once a month, the third Saturday of the month. Our audit starts next Tuesday, and I don't know if everybody got, I got this email this afternoon from Romeo, I'm just gonna share with everybody, because...
Well, if you wanna share that right now, we could, if you want. Yeah, I just seen it, but I needed a chance to print it off. I wanna read it really quick for Megan.
Well, it's kinda your thing.
All right, I'll read it. You have anything else?
No.
This is a letter we just, like Susan said, received from Village President, Megan Poznanski. This is regarding our sewer capacity request that we've made, a request in front of, from the Village Romeo, it says, Mr. Philbrook, Bruce Township is expressed, they need for additional sewer capacity in both short-term and long-term. The Village Romeo reconvened its sewer committee in consideration of this request. Since such time, the Village of Romeo has determined has no, repeat, has no additional capacities available. The Village Sewer Committee Subcommittee will continue to meet in order to ascertain the feasibility of a plant expansion and cost estimates. So that's what the answer will, just highlight on that. I just happened to be talking with Bob, and the question came up about a bond that we had or that we had taken out, and it was basically from the last time we did a sewer plant upgrade with the Village of Romeo. We still owe two million dollars. Two million dollars from the original upgrade that gets sewer capacity from them, which I think was a total of three-point-three million dollars. And here we are making a request for additional sewer capacity, they say have no additional capacities available. They are looking to maybe do an upgrade or a plant expansion again, which we would, they would probably be looking to us to, you know, make another contribution, so we would have...
They didn't get that grant.
They didn't. Either that, or we, we are running out of sewer, I'd be the first one to admit that. Been trying to get sewer capacity now for four years from the Village of Romeo, and basically, this is the first time we've actually got, you know, a solid answer. So I think that this township needs either look at, either trying to, you know, put more funds towards the Village Romeo and expansion, or we need to go on our own and look at building our own sewer treatment plant, which is terrible to say, I mean, when we got a plant in the area, you know, so. All right, that's all I got on that. Thirty-two mile road traffic light seems to be up and running. I did get a couple complaints, not because of traffic light, they're happy that it's there. Now the people are, the semis are using the Jake brakes, coming down and, you know, to stop, making a lot of noises, rattling people's windows. And then they're part about, people like to see it maybe to speed a little bit slower, it goes from thirty-five. There's a sign on thirty-two mile road heading west that says thirty-five ends, then it goes to fifty-five because it's unposted. It's fifty-five through the light, the traffic light, and then it turns to forty-five afterwards. They'd like to see the speed limit maybe go from thirty-five to forty-five and continue forty-five through the traffic light into the area where it's forty-five west of the traffic light, so I'm gonna try to work on that, so. I'm happy to say that we've been meeting with Parks and Rec, the Village of Romeo, Washington Township, the DDA. I'm trying to forget anybody, but we're looking at putting a tri-community magazine together, we all send out our newsletters, we all send out our magazines, Frank's been in meetings with me. It seems to be like we're doing really well, coming up with a one paper. Our one magazine is gonna be shiny cover magazine, it's gonna be a real nice magazine for the community, so all the information will be located in one magazine for newsletters, events, Parks and Rec activities, not just from Parks and Rec, but from all the communities, so. We'll highlight people in our community, so, kind of nice. That's coming, we're working on, we're getting really close for final, right Frank?
Yep.
I think August, I think we should...
Yeah, we should, yeah.
For the August deadline for the...
For the November edition.[1747.91]
events, Parks and Rec activities, not just from Parks and Rec, but from all the communities. So we'll highlight people in our community, so, kind of nice. That's coming, we're working on, we're getting really close for final, right Frank?
Yeah.
I think August, I think we should-
Yeah, yeah.
For the August deadline for the-
For the November edition.
November edition, yeah. So, that's pretty much all I got, I think, so. All right. I'm gonna move on. Item eighty, which is motion entering to close session on MCL fifteen-point-two-six-seven-eight-H. Discuss the legal award regarding the TBOM grievance number twenty-four dash two-seven-two with legal counsel. That's pretty much in a nutshell.
It would be eight C of the open meeting.
Did you hear?
C. He lost his C instead of H.
Oh, C. Okay. So we'll switch that to eight H instead of eight C?
We'll switch it to eight C.
Eight C instead of eight H?
We've been backing for it.
That's what I said. Okay. At seven oh four PM. All right, the clock's wrong all the way. I thank everybody for coming out. Appreciate it.